Mr. President, you have a quorum.
Jeff, can you fix the sound? Can the audience hear us? No? Chancellor, can you get Jeff to fix the speakers? So at this point, we'd like to call the meeting to order. And we have a call-out session. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Can we have the readout from closed session, please?
At tonight's closed session, the Board voted to approve the appointment of the following public employee contracts, which are subject to contractual agreement by the Chancellor. Salaries are for informational purposes only and are not voted on by the Board. David Nguyen as Director of Financial Aid, effective July 1st, 2014 through June 30th, 2015, or until the position is filled on a regular basis at $113,300 annually. Unanimous, seven ayes. Pamela Wallace as Director for Building Efficiency for a Sustainable Tomorrow, BEST, a grant-funded position at Laney College, effective September 10th, 2014 through June 30th, 2016, at $97,850 annually, unanimous. Rebecca LeCoke as the Interim Director for Career Pathways Trust Consortium, a grant-funded position, effective September 12th, 2014 through February 27th, 2015, or until the position is filled on a regular basis at $113,300 annually, unanimously adopted. If these individuals are present, please stand so that we can welcome you into your new position. Mr. Presi-- ah, we got somebody? Mr. President, that concludes the closed session readout for tonight.
Thank you. At this point, I'd like to, without objection from the Board, move item number 16. Item number 16 is conduct adoption of Resolution 1415-08, 2014-15, Peralta Community College District Final Budget, to be acted upon after the public hearing, which is item number seven. Any objection from the Board? Seeing none, so moved. Is there approval for the agenda? Any other changes or additions to the agenda? Is there approval for the agenda?
Still moved.
Seeing none. There's a motion by trustee Galasa. Is there a second?
I'll second here.
Trusted by trustee Riley. All those in favor?
Aye.
Agenda is approved. Approval of the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the regular Board meeting on July 15th, 2014? Moved by trustee Handy, seconded by trustee Riley. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. We move on to public communication. Do we have any public speakers tonight?
Yes, we do! Now, I have 40 speaker cards, so I'm gonna ask everyone to try and be mindful of the time. We're very, very much wanting to hear what everyone says, but if we can try and get through these quickly, that'd be greatly appreciated. The first speaker, I'll give, read out the speaker names. Herbert Kitchen, James Blake, Ciara Matthews, Miguel Oida, and Lonnie Lucas are the first one, two, three, four, five names. Are any of those people present?
Good evening. President Guin, Board of Trustees, Chancellor Ortiz, Peralta staff, and community stakeholders. My name is Herbert Kitchen, and I serve as the President of the Peralta Association for African-American Affairs, known as PAH, which is an affiliate council of the American Association for Community Colleges. PAH is very concerned and disappointed regarding the apparent change in decision related to programs to be funded by Peralta Accountability for Student Success, monies that specifically target Peralta's achievement gap. These programs were to be personally approved by the Chancellor in response to the call for proposals and were to begin implementation for the fall 2014 semester. PAH has met with Chancellor Ortiz, college presidents, vice chancellors, and key staff over the past two years addressing Peralta's African-American student achievement gap. Staff has provided district-wide data that has shown there is a disparaging gap within this population and needs immediate attention. PAH will continue in its collaborative working spirit with all district and college staff until issues for Peralta's achievement gap become watercooler conversation talk district-wide and until such programs become real. PAH submitted our district-wide proposal to Chancellor Ortiz on June 30th, outlining our proposed program and its services and a detailed description, scope of work, and our foundational framework rooted in research, data, past practices, and successful models from Peralta and other local and national colleges. We felt our proposed program would work here and benefit our community of colleges. The Chancellor's response to PAH's proposal was received on September 6th. However, in it, no tangible specifics were given, only mentioning that more details will be given along this line in the next couple of weeks. We eagerly await what those details might contain. PAH, like other organizations who submitted proposals, want to know its status and how your final decision will better serve our students. This is something upon which we all agree. However, here are a few areas of concern for PAH. One, the chain of events that now seem to be unfolding related to past funds in regard to the achievement gap appear to be disingenuous and disrespectful to the time PAH members and key district staff have spent to bring attention to this matter.
Excuse me, Mr. Kitchen, you run out of time. Is someone willing to cede their time to you?
I am.
That person is...oh, hi.
Toni Cook.
Alright, so I'm going to keep going, sir. I will take Toni Cook's.
Two, communication across the district has been disjointed and confusing at best. It is apparent that nothing is in place to begin implementation this fall or even spring 2015, as was discussed in previous meetings with the Chancellor. PAH has repeatedly stressed the importance of continuity across the district and a baseline for program components and objectives. However, with recent decisions, apparently now college presidents are to use monies left to implement whatever they decide. Where is the continuity? Where is the oversight? Should all programs be based on Peralta data and research? What is the plan to blend all of these various programs and initiatives into something that makes sense across the district that will have a solid foundation, make an impact, and produce the desired outcomes? Where is the transparency? Four, are college equity plans that are being developed now and have associated funding, are they addressing the Peralta achievement gap? To that end, let me repeat. PAH is dedicated and committed to the success of all students who come through our doors, and we firmly believe that the development and the implementation of such programs and services district-wide will address Peralta's achievement gap. It seems obviously that PAH's sincere efforts were not taken serious or valued. PAH remains dedicated to ensure that the Peralta Community College District addressed the achievement gap that we have been discussing with the Chancellor, college presidents, vice chancellors, and various cabinet members, and now we feel skeptical and unsure as to how to approach with confidence any next steps in this process. Our motto is onward and upward as we forge new ground to engage the success of every student here at Peralta. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Board and Peralta community.
Can we restart the clock, please?
The reason why I'm here today, I'm James Blake. I represent the Peralta Classified Senate. One of the things that we are concerned about is in terms of moving forward, is doing the right thing for Peralta. During the summer, Dr. Fran White did a report from the Collaborative Brain Trust on our master plans. And some of the things that we found were disturbing as far as our paying attention to the objectives and the missions that we should be here at Peralta. I'd like to share with you something I read before, what is thinking outside the box, called Friends Wisdom by Carl Woods, and it's titled "Your Belief System." Your belief system is actually a set of precepts for which you live your daily life, those which govern your thoughts, words, and actions. Without these precepts, you cannot function. So in order to take this journey and to give it some meaning, you must answer the following questions for yourself. It will help you to find out where you are, and as with any journey, it helps you to know where you're starting from. Please understand that this is not an easy thing for most people to do, but it is necessary to see ourselves as we truly are, no matter how unpleasant the task may be. Even if you think you know the answers, please read the questions and think about the truthful answers that be given, need to be given. If any part of what you believe is a lie, then you are not acting in a place of truth. For without acting in this way that is completely truthful, you will find that everything you do is a lie. Therefore, any attempt you may make towards resolving any problems may be in vain. I will send you the questions at a later time, but I think this speaks well to us understanding in order for us to write Peralta, to achieve its potential, we need to start engaging in telling truth amongst ourselves and others. We must value and respect those who are part of the Peralta community. It is only then will we actually right the ship to satisfy our accreditation standards, to fulfill our mission statements, and our core values. Without telling the truth, we will fail ourselves, we will fail our students, and we will fail our future. Thank you.
I am coming up to speak about the tutoring center at Laney. Students are not being tutored at Laney because the supervisor, John Yee, has not been hired due to problems with funding. Mr. Yee has been a dedicated tutor that has helped countless students in their journey to learn and understand mathematics. When it comes to his job, Mr. Yee goes above and beyond, staying after hours to tutor students and encouraging them along the way. He is truly an asset to the Laney community. I came to Laney not sure if I could succeed in advanced math courses, but John saw my potential and worked with me for hours each day. With his help, I was able to pass pre-calculus and Calculus I, as well as other math classes. I know that I am not the only student that he has helped. There are many students that would vouch for his dedication to the education of Peralta students. It would be a mistake not to hire him in a timely manner. Thank you for listening.
Excuse me, the next speaker is Miguel. Is Miguel here, or is this Lonnie?
This is a presentation.
Oh, okay.
This is a presentation.
Okay.
ASLC.
Good evening, Chancellor Baisantella, college president, trustees, members of the general public. We would like to wish Peralta Colleges District happy 50-year anniversary. In early 1970, the Peralta College District granted students an opportunity for housing--
I'm sorry, is there supposed to be-- there we go, it's on the screen now. Thank you.
For housing-- for housing as a home away from home, because at times, students need a place where they could feel at home, where other place better than the college they attend. In the arga, Peralta hold a home of students. I call, at Laney, they got an answer for guy looking for a place to stay. People see Laney as a home. Yes, to remind you guys.
This opportunity has allowed before shared governance, this opportunity was allowed before shared governance was mandated by AB 1725. In 1984, talks of AB 1725 came about to allow faculty, staff, and students the right to participate in decisions regarding their constituents. In 1988, the governor signed AB 1725 into being--
In 2002, Laney Today, the newsletter of Laney College at the time, published an article about the new VP of Instruction, Dr. Jose Ortiz. It spoke of Dr. Ortiz being a strong, end quote, "strong advocate and practitioner of the principles of shared governance." And I quote him stating, "It's absolutely necessary for an institution of this size to include all constituencies in decision-making at every level." Furthermore, and I quote him stating again, "Planning not only helps identify what we would like to do in the future, having plans in place helps you make decisions that are grounded in analysis and collaboration with all constituency groups." Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Elaborating on what my comrade has just stated, at a presentation given at a trustee meeting this past June 2014, Dr. Eileen White found that plans made within the Peralta District are outdated and not carried out. Furthermore, college input and participation was not attained in plans. Examples, the decision was made to have Janet Napolitano as a commencement speaker at a 2014 graduation, which took place at Laney. To me, honestly, I found that insulting. When students were not involved in the decision-making process, even after voicing their concerns, opposing to Janet Napolitano speaking at the 2014 Laney graduation. Also in addition, at a board meeting of trustees on March 11th-- sorry, hold on a second. Yes, I was right. Never mind. Yeah. Also at a board meeting of trustees on March 11th, 2014, it was approved to move student government accounts to the district, creating a trust fund. Again, there was no decision-making of students.
Hi, everyone. My name is Rose Jalen, ASLC Vice President. I keep asking myself, if we all are here for the student, we're working for the student, why not help the student? Why not invite the student in the decision-making? For example, Napolitano and the fund they removed from our account. The fund shall be expended subject to procedures that may be established by the student body organization. The governing board of each community college district shall establish rules and regulation not inconsistent with the regulation of the Board of Governors and law of the state. Let me give you guys a minute to read what this thing say. PCCDBP 2510 states, "The Associated Students Shall Be Given the Opportunity to Participate Effectively in the Formulation and Development of District Policies and Procedures that Has Significant Effect on Student as Defined by Law." PCCDBP 5420 states, "Associated Student Funds of the District Colleges are Independent Funds Administered by Student Organizations." Therefore, "The Associated Student of Laney College seeks change within the shared governance process of the Peralta Community College District and requires that our student funds remain retained by the student." Just so you guys know, the fund was removed without knowledge of the student, like ASLC, and we asking for the fund to be back to our account. Thank you.
Our next speakers-- our next speakers, ASMC, Terry Marlborough and Marlene Hurd. Our next speakers, Associated Student Government of Merritt College, Terry Marlborough and Marlene Hurd. And after that, we have Matthew Goldstein, Laura Watson, Janelle Hampton, and Anna Roy.
Good evening. I am Terry Marlborough, representing Merritt College as the VP of the ASMC and as a member of the BSU. Our ASG is diverse and composed of nine senators representing several clubs on campus. We are in the process of finalizing our official ceremony where we are all to be sworn in. Yesterday, we held our second meeting. It was our pleasure to work with the Women's Project Group, WEP, in the form of monetary donation as well as hosting an event inside the UEP Newton Student Lounge. We also approved spending for the installation of bike racks and for eight additional and legitimate non-smoking signs to post around our campus. The last thing we discussed was the preparation for our Latino Heritage Awareness Event and the possibility of bringing outside food vendors to add to our experience. Now, on behalf of Merritt College's BSU, in 2010, Peralta TV created a documentary highlighting Merritt College as a home of the Black Panthers. As a proud Oakland native, I have been awakened by the knowledge I obtained at Merritt. As a member of the BSU and an Afro Studies major, I was empowered to learn the accomplishments by a group of youthful, organized students who pushed to have the first Afro Studies Department in the United States here at Merritt College. They worked in solidarity with the Asian and Chicano communities to overcome oppression. The Black Panther Party has been instrumental in the history of progression and true liberation. Unfortunately, many students, even on our campus, aren't aware of this history. We propose that the Peralta TV original documentary be aired as a part of Merritt College's initiation orientation process. The ASG at Merritt is dedicated and ready to serve and advocate for our students. We are very excited and look forward to begin working on restoring the unity back into the community college. I am Terry Marlborough, VP of Merritt College ASG. That's all I have to present at this moment. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, college presidents, Board of Trustees, Chancellor, and administrators, and community. Can I pull this up? My name is Marlene Hurd. I'm a student attending Merritt College, and on the Associate Students of Merritt College as a senator, I'm also the president for the Merritt College Tobacco Prevention Club. At our meeting on Monday, the Associate Students of Merritt College voted to support buying signs for tobacco prevention. January 31st, 2014, we ended up interviewing key officials at Merritt College students on their attitudes toward the district's no-smoking regulations. We found that 68 of the interviews would support a policy prohibiting smoking anywhere at Merritt, even though Merritt currently has designated areas. 87% are aware of the policy. 70% still encounter second-hand smoke on campus. 73% are bothered by the second-hand smoke. 80% would like to see more enforcement on the smoke policy. 76% think a verbal warning would be the most effective way to inform smokers. And 77% would like to see a student group at Merritt to address the issue of second-hand smoke. So we're here today to just inform the Board of Trustees that we're looking at the smoking policy and students are voicing their concerns regarding second-hand smoke. We're gonna be working through our college president. We've actually met with her over the summer, and we're seeing some valuable information from her. And we're gonna be working with our student government and the clubs on campus. And we're looking forward to also working with the Peralta Student Council. Okay, so we just wanna give you a heads-up on our work for this semester. Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Matthew Goldstein. I'm president of the Peralta Federation of Teachers, AFT Local 1603. Thanks for having us tonight. I just wanted to say, I've been president of the PFT for three-plus years, and I've never felt prouder or more humbled to be able to represent the faculty of our four colleges. As you can see, we have about 60-plus concerned faculty members here tonight, and my intention here is simply to turn it over to our folks to talk about the injustice that has been perpetrated at Laney College toward a couple of our esteemed, long-term, part-time faculty members. So I'd like to yield the balance of my time to Janelle Hampton, a colleague from Laney and Merritt College, and a part-timer and a real union soldier. So, thank you.
I'm Laura Watson, and I'm yielding my time to Janelle Hampton.
You guys know how to make a person feel special. My name is Janelle Hampton. I teach English part-time at Laney and part-time at Merritt College. And I've been doing it for a long time, but not as long as the people who received letters this summer regarding their lack of assignment this fall. I have been drawn nearer and nearer to my colleagues regarding this issue, and it's become very crystal clear that I'm here not just to talk to you all, the Board, and the administrators, and the college and district leadership, but to all of us. I wanna make sure that everybody here in this room and on that TV understands that the words I speak are to put the sunlight on this situation, because at my heart, I'm a hopeful person. And I come to this meeting right now and presenting with you with hope. Sometimes, as one of our excellent colleagues, Taya, pointed out, bad consequences are levied out on good people. And a lot of times, we have to say, and so it goes. It happens to many of us, because most of the time, there's little we can do about it. But this time, these bad consequences levied out on good people, good teachers, there's something every single person in this room and in that room, regardless of what color you're wearing tonight, can do about this in your conversations, in your guidance of our district, in your leadership on the campuses. Every single person in this room and that one can do something about the lack of assignments given to our two long-term, part-time, esteemed colleagues. All faculty members receive regular evaluations. And if you're really lucky, and also following ed code and the contractually agreed-upon requirements through evaluation, those evaluations can lead to a tenure-track position. But for most of us, that is not the truth. But that wasn't satisfactory for the district side of a negotiations team, and it wasn't satisfactory for the faculty part. So we put our heads together and came up with the Preferred Hiring Pool, another set of details in our evaluation procedure-- Another set of details in our evaluation procedures that could lead to the only job security part-timers have, being in that preferred hiring pool. And there's a reason you have to exceed expectations to get in. And you don't just take it to stay there and sit back on your haunches and do whatever you want. You actually have to earn a qualifying level of evaluations after that. These are evaluation procedures that we all agreed on to provide job security to part-timers. So when we slash and dash, or whoever signs letters that are written to long-term, part-time, well-evaluated instructors, regardless of any due process and not respecting any due process that we all agree to abide by, that's a serious problem. So after a collective 25 years of service, these faculty members are bereft of their assignments, and the campuses are bereft of their qualities as teachers. And the rest of us are left in a seriously questionable teaching environment. These faculty are me and you, and these faculty have been all of you. And we're all professionals, and we're all laborers, and we all want the same thing, to come to our job assuming, or maybe not everybody assumes, that we are valued by our work community, but also that if we perform our duties according to the contract and California ed code, that we will not be sent a form letter calling us by genders and names that actually don't apply to us. That's how little thought went into this. And asserting secretly derived-out assessments, we are actually professionals who assume that when a faculty member is in good standing, he or she will never be told with no meeting, no warning, and no due process, that after we've considered how faculty best fit in the environment of teaching and learning, that our desire to assign classes and our desire to assign classes to instructors who best fit the wide range of learning needs reflected in our student body, end quote, "You will receive no assignment regardless of the last 17 years of positive evaluations. You'll receive no assignment after 17 years of faithful service." And if you don't find this jarring because of the lack of due process, you really should. You're not paying attention, but I think you do. I'm looking at a sea of orange, and I think you understand. And I think you understand up here, too, because we agreed on this contract together. Now, this is the only part of job security that part-timers have. And so we are not here standing up and united because we have a burning desire to spend our Tuesday night with you all fine people, although you are fine people. I have worked with several of you in several different situations, and I can say that I have respect for every person in this room and in that room. And I believe that every person in this room and that room can make the right decision. So one of the dismissed faculty and our group realizes there's a deep connection to this lack of due process and an attack on academic freedom. One of the dismissed faculty was actually criticized and chastised by administration because of the textbook they use. That is academic freedom. That is what holds our jobs sacred and our commitment to teaching the future, which I'm proud of tonight, sacred. Another one of the faculty members was told that assessments that lead to passing data, fail rates, and other concepts of student success that are not in the areas of due process agreed upon in the contract were depended on to make this decision to send this letter, and that is unacceptable. When this kangaroo process deprived Laney College of a faculty member in good standing, Cynthia Mahabir, you guys need to know that they deprived the faculty of our strongest part-time advocate. They deprived the PFT of our democratically-elected, part-time representative. There is not one now. And they deprived the entire membership of a strong, experienced voice for part-time rights on our negotiating team.
Ms. Hampton, do you have someone else to cede time to you?
I do not. So I will conclude by saying, oh, Peter Brown secedes his time to Janelle Hampton. Good man. Thank you, brother. So we are told, you know, trust me, this is not in violation of our contract. We've literally been told that. And trust me, there is just cause for these actions to have been taken. We just don't get to know about it. And those secrets are what we need to shed light on, like Mr. Blake was talking about. Let us not be afraid of the truth. Let us cling to what we all agree on, the contract. So look at this, union-strong, unified force. Look at the people who we came together with to create that contract, and know that we're here because we want what all professionals want, to be able to show up at our jobs and get to work. Thank you.
Our next speakers, Anna Roy, Cynthia Mahabir, Ramona Del Pozo.
I yield my time to Dr. Cynthia Mahabir.
Good evening. I'm Anna.
Thank you, Anna. Good evening to everyone, trustees, chancellor Ortiz, other administrators, faculty colleagues, and friends, students, and everyone else present here this evening. I want to recognize all the students and the faculty colleagues who are here in support of part-time rehire rights tonight. So I'll read what I have, because I don't have much time. I am Cynthia Mahabir, in two roles here today, as union activist, still as the part-time faculty representative with the PFT, sorry about that, and one of two grievance for the denial of reemployment at Laney College. I'm here today to ask for a reversal of the decisions denying reemployment to me and to Matthew Hubbard, a part-time math instructor at Laney, and to remind all concerned in the district about the obligation to comply with the contractual requirements of the part-time rehire pool. The last time I was at this podium was in the spring of 2013, when I was an active part-time instructor of sociology at Laney College. And as the PFT's part-time faculty representative, I came to share with you the results of an extensive survey of Peralta's part-time faculty I had recently conducted. It was the third such survey I had completed in the district for the PFT. The goal of these surveys was to use current empirical data to advocate for the improvement of working conditions, especially equity and job security for part-time faculty members in the district. The strongest point made by respondents was that there is a symbiotic relationship between job security and equity for part-time faculty members, real equity versus the mere rhetoric of equity, and student learning and success. Today, my focus will be on job security, or in the language of our contract, reemployment or rehire rights for part-time faculty members, who comprise about 70% of the faculty in the district. About 755 members of the faculty are part-time faculty. There's a story here, a story of origin and intent of the rehire rights policy in our contract, as well as my own record with respect to academic credentials, range and quality of scholarship, professional engagement, and of course, teaching evaluation. I started teaching at Laney in 1997. I was elected to the PFT as the part-time faculty rep in 2005. I don't know if Susan Shaka is here, but she guilt-tripped me into this as a sociology, social change person. I immediately took up the job security issue, pushed for a reemployment policy, and with other members of the PFT, negotiated the rehire pool provisions in the year 2006. The requirements are as follows: After six to 10 semesters of faculty service, a comprehensive evaluation for the rehire pool with an above-average overall rating that is surpassing requirements or as exemplary, one gains entry into the rehire pool, which means that the faculty member is entitled to what is called a base load assignment at minimum. My entry into the rehire pool was in 2007. I was probably the first, one of the first people, to test the rehire pool provisions and to be entered into the pool. I want to talk now briefly about my sudden, I call this, "disemployment." I received a base load assignment in January of 2014, the spring, two classes. By the end of the spring semester, I was not notified of any change in this assignment. I was gone for the summer. I returned in mid-July, bubbling, truly, truly bubbling with new social observations and anecdotes from my travels, the latest research findings in sociology for my summer catch-up of the latest literature in the field, and opened my mail to find a letter dated July 9th telling me that because I had no summer nor a fall assignment, I should return keys to the tower building. I was totally puzzled by this. I sent an email to Laney College and asked what this was about. The response was severance of my access to the Peralta EDU. Up till this day, I do not have access to Peralta EDU. I have never received a letter of "disemployment" from the district. It turns out that the PFT received a copy of the letter, which says, in part, "This letter comes," it says, "Dear Mr. Mahabir," I thought I was still Ms. Mahabir, "this letter comes as notification that you will not be receiving an instructional assignment at Laney College for the fall semester 2014. While we appreciate the contributions you have made in the sociology department, this decision was made after considering how faculty best fit into the environment of teaching and learning at Laney College, and based on our desire to assign classes to instructors who best fit the wide range of learning needs reflected in our student body." I was stunned, all of a sudden, with a short, peculiarly-worded form letter, wrongly addressed, and which I never even received directly from Laney, I was rendered a discard, as trash. Matthew Hubbard received a clone of the same letter. In my view, and that of several members of the PFT, this was an arbitrary and capricious decision. Why? Here is a summary of my record. I have been with Laney College for 17 years. I received an exemplary evaluation rating in 2007, as I mentioned earlier, was placed in the rehire pool in 2007.
Pardon me, Ms. Mahabir. May someone else see their... Someone that's got a speaker card. Well, I want to make sure there's a speaker card. Name, please?
Nick Crum.
All right.
My educational background, I have a bachelor's degree from Howard University, I have a master's degree from University of Maryland, and I have a doctorate from the University of California at Berkeley. My university teaching experience, besides teaching in the community college, I have taught at San Jose State University in the Department of African-American Studies, where I created courses. I've taught at the University of San Francisco, I have taught at San Francisco State University, and several other four-year institutions. I have been active on the campus as a union activist and also in other aspects of campus activity. Recently, this past spring, I was elected as a write-in candidate for a seat on the Laney Faculty Senate, which of course, I can't hold right now because I'm no longer there. I have statewide involvement. In fact, trustee Brown can testify to this, that I have been working with her on equal pay for equal work. We'd like to get a bill sponsored in the legislature for part-time faculty. I have a wide range of scholarly work. I have published a book on black power. I have published in the International Journal of the Sociology of Law. I have published in feminist studies, in social and legal studies, in popular music, and journals which I can't remember right now, the British Journal of Criminology. My professional work also, my engagement in the field is extensive. I will mention only one example. I was selected about two years ago by the American Sociological Association to be one of 12 members of a task force on community college sociology faculty in the country. I should mention that there are 1,200 community colleges. Ten community colleges are represented on this task force because two of the members are from four-year institutions. I put Laney College on the map. Nobody had heard of Laney College. In this capacity as member of this task force, we have already conducted a national survey of sociology faculty. We have received the data, 50% of the respondents are part-time faculty members and 50% are full-time members. We are going to be analyzing that data soon. We are looking at how sociology can be made more relevant and more useful as possibly a gateway discipline to STEM students. There are many recommendations which are going to be generated from this survey for sociology faculty nationwide. This task force is going to submit its report at the end of this year. So despite this extensive record of accomplishment and professional engagement in my field of sociology, the Laney College administration wrote to Mr. Mahabir, "This decision was made after considering how faculty best fit into the environment of teaching and learning at Laney College."
Pardon me, Ms. Mahabir. Would one more person wish to cede their time?
I'm almost done. Is it okay? I'm almost done. Sorry to boast. And based on our desire to assign classes to instructors who best fit the wide range of learning needs reflected in our student body. So on this subject of my performance as a teacher and best fit, we can hear what some students who've taken my classes have to say. Several of them have taken time off their homework schedule to come here and speak tonight. Several of them are at UC Berkeley right now. One is at Mills College, and two, I think, I don't know how many of them made it, are planning to go to CSU. So thank you very much for your time.
Students that are coming up, let me know if you have a speaker card and your name. To Alisa Ronston, Cecilia Dugas, Chase Guan, and Amy Fields. Your name, please? Your name, please?
My name is Ramona Del Pozo. Good evening, Chancellor Ortiz and Peralta Board of Trustees and Peralta community. My name is Ramona Del Pozo. I am currently a senior at UC Berkeley, and I major in public health. Before I transferred to Berkeley, I took Intro to Sociology at Laney College with Professor Mahabir, and I'd like to share my experience as a student in her class. Professor Mahabir's class was well-organized. The course outline, classroom policies, grading guidelines, and student expectations were laid out clearly in our syllabus and discussed at the beginning of the semester. And when I say student expectations, she told us what she expected from us and what we could expect from her. She treated students fairly and reminded us that just because, this is most importantly, just because we were in community college did not mean we were not entitled to a top-notch quality education. Her classroom was a safe place to learn and really develop our critical thinking skills. The class material was presented in a way that was both entertaining and challenging. She encouraged us to work hard and realize our full potential. I credit Professor Mahabir for teaching me to see everyday phenomena in a different analytical light. It was like she had given me a new pair of glasses that allowed me to gain a deeper understanding of the world. These skills have added value in my academic process, especially in my transferring to UC Berkeley, and I'm certain it will have similar effects in my professional life. I don't know if you remember Professor Mahabir, but a conversation during office hours sparked my interest in studying the sociology of medicine at the School of Public Health at Cal. I really think that taking a sociological perspective on medicine will give me a much-needed edge on my medical school application, especially since I'm not majoring in biology. Professor Mahabir has always been an accessible, encouraging, friendly, dedicated, and caring instructor. She encourages her students to think outside the box, push themselves, and work together. Instructors like Professor Mahabir are critical to the success of myself and other students, which is why I request that she be reinstated immediately so she can continue her invaluable work at Laney. So I have to say, thank you for this opportunity to share my statement and my gratitude towards Professor Mahabir. You don't hear this often enough, but you are appreciated, you are making an impact, and just changing the trajectory of myself and many other students. So thank you. Thank you.
Dear Chancellor Ortiz and members of the Boards of Trustees and the community, my name is Toelisa Ronston. I'm an international student from Sweden and a former student in Professor Mahabir's Introduction to Sociology class in the spring of 2013 at Laney College. This year, I have transferred to UC Berkeley, and I'm studying anthropology. I am here today to inform you about my experience as a student in the class of Professor Mahabir and my assessment of her as an instructor. As I rec- As I recall, Professor Mahabir's class was very well-organized and very well-planned out. It appeared to me that she put a big effort at constructing her classes to enable us to get as much out of the lesson as possible. I appreciated that she was approaching her students as adults and put the level of education to a standard that pushed us further. Compared to many other professors, she put a big effort at correcting your work in detail and making you feel like you wanted to achieve better next time. She encouraged her speaking and writing skills with continuous presentations as well as smaller field work projects within the topic of sociology. This field work, among many other discussions we had in class, connected us to the relevant events, and she always encouraged us to stay on top of news and political events in the world, but especially locally. Professor Mahabir wanted us, our students, to be present and focused during class to get as much out of her lectures as possible and did not let disruptive behavior destroy the class. I found this approach to classroom atmospheric rules extremely relieving, and it gave room to an easier access to learning and interest for the subject. It is with the ambition and conviction of a professor like Mahabir that makes students at the Peralta Colleges want to achieve academic progress and, like in my case, feel inspired by the knowledge and the teaching method for me to believe in myself that I can go on to the next step in education. Because of the value and significance of instructors like her to the success of the other students at Laney and elsewhere, I request that she will be reinstated immediately to continue the work she has been doing at Laney. You inspire me. Thank you so much.
Good evening, Chancellor Ortiz and the Peralta Board of Trustees, and good evening also to everyone else present here today. My name is Cecilia Dugas. I am a transfer student to Mills College, majoring in sociology. I respectfully present to you this written statement on behalf of Professor Mahabir and the many other students now and in the future that are and will be denied an extremely rich and valuable educational experience without Professor Mahabir's presence in the sociology department and classrooms here at Laney College. In the fall of 2011, I enrolled in Professor Mahabir's Sociology Five Minorities Groups class, a class that would ultimately change the course of my educational goals while simultaneously steering me in new directions and reflecting about my personal life and possible strategies to work successfully towards the career and social change role I set for myself. Having taken this class, I would venture to say that without this class, Laney students, especially those of color, would be denied the opportunity for an eye-opening education in the sociology of race and ethnic study, relations in U.S. society, not only in terms of the structure of these complex relations, but also information about becoming change agents, change agents in social movements to alter the world of racial and ethnic inequality around us. Professor Mahabir delivers just such an education that I can never forget. Above all, she transferred to me a wealth of knowledge that I took with me as a 2014 graduate of Laney College with honors to Mills College as a sociology major. Challenging as an instructor, Professor Mahabir presented class material in a clear and comprehensible way, always leaving time for discussion and clarification of her lectures. Professor Mahabir's selection of class and supplemental materials was current and informative, and her presentations were alive and passionate in the spirit of sociological thought and theories. This professor was instrumental in my success in the Peralta Community College District. She requires her students to raise their own bar, use critical thinking skills, and develop and integrate good college-level study habits into their academic work so that we will be prepared for the next level of educational goals to take our place in society. Instructors like Professor Mahabir are invaluable to students like me and to others, some of whom are here tonight and some had previous commitments and were not able to join us. With that, I respectfully request that Professor Mahabir be reinstated immediately to continue the work she has been doing at Laney College. We, the students, former and present, stand by the professor's work and its invaluable impact in our academic and social lives. Thank you.
We have next Chase Guan, Amy Fields, and Billy Reed.
If you'd like to submit, then you can submit it to the clerk.
Oh, you want to know where to submit your letter?
No, no, no. She has it written, wrote, and wanted it read.
Oh, well, we've got it. I want to make sure, if someone is willing to see their time, but we've got to make sure we, everybody gets their opportunity, and we have a fifteen...
If you'd like to submit the letter, you can submit it to the clerk and we'll make sure to get a copy of it. Thank you.
Chase?
Hi. Good evening, Chancellor Jose Ortiz and Trustees, Peralta Board of Trustees, sorry, and everybody else here tonight. My name is Chase Guan. I was a student of Professor Mahabir in Introduction to Sociology in spring 2014. I am currently applying to transfer to SF State or Cal State East Bay. I am here to tell you about the experience as a student of Professor Mahabir and how her class has helped me. Dr. Mahabir presented her class in a very organized manner. We walked into class with the board providing subjects and the information we would discuss for that day. Those notes would be copied to help us review at a later time. In lecture, she would go over subjects on the board in sync in an organized manner, interesting and easy for us to follow along and understand. I liked it. I paid attention a lot, all the time. She made everything easy to understand. It wasn't all over the place. It was interesting because she related it to reality. The information about the subjects we talked about really stuck with me and other students because of the examples she related it to, and it was very easy to remember. I was able to remember everything very easily because of the type of everyday subjects, everyday subjects in reality. I and other students would actively participate, asking questions and sharing our experiences. She treated students fairly, she had a lot of respect for them, and so did they. The learning environment was nice, fresh breeze of air blowing into the classroom as we were learning about the world and society. I took this course as part of my transfer units from my major of registered nursing. I liked it. I learned a lot of new things and so did the others in the class. We did group discussions where we were actively learning, such as reading articles, watching videos relating to it, gathering and organizing information, then coming back to class and share with our groups about what we learned, present to the class our summary of the different type of information we discovered, and then write an essay reviewing it. This type of active group work was effective because we were all able to relate our experiences to it. Dr. Mahabir is one of the instructors that had an active, effective teaching strategy. For exams, she prepared study guides for us in advance regarding the subjects she wanted us to know about. She was able to connect with me and other students about daily life of sociology and the world around us. There were many things in the class that she would talk about that had a connection with daily life. Because of the value and the significance of instructors like Professor Mahabir to the success of other students at Laney and elsewhere, I request that she be reinstated immediately to continue the work she has been doing at Laney. Thank you.
Next is Amy Fields, then Billy Reed, Jamila Rowland. We could try and move...
Good evening. My name is Ami Fields. I took Sociology I, Intro to Soc, with Dr. Mahabir in spring of 2013. I'm presenting my statement to inform you all about my experience as a student in that class. I'm currently a third-year student at UC Berkeley studying interdisciplinary studies with an emphasis in social psychology and music. Dr. Mahabir is a huge reason why I'm there and studying IDS today. Through engaging lectures, class group work, and captivating projects, I participated in one of my favorite courses that I took in the Peralta system. Dr. Mahabir was extremely organized with both assignments and lectures, and she presented the information in such a way that was both easy to understand with clear concepts, but also thought-provoking. Our first project in the class was called the Big Box Store Project. I don't know if you guys remember that. It was absolutely one of my favorites, and it was actually a great opportunity because we were able to conduct an ethnographic study and view what would be a typical part of our society through the eyes of a sociologist. That was a cool first project. And this forced us to really look at our daily social environments in a different way. As the semester progressed, we were able to shift our focus of the class from foundational principles to the applications of those principles in today's society. And I really enjoyed that we often studied recent sociological articles and conducted class and group discussions. Besides learning about sociology and developing a passion for the social science, Dr. Mahabir's class taught me how to perform studies and properly and efficiently work in groups. Because she treated every student fairly and encouraged questions, group work was easier as everyone was on the same page. And if ever there was a time someone didn't understand it, she would automatically talk about it some more until everyone was on the same page. Through participation in ethnographic studies, class group work, and well-planned course material, I learned properly how to conduct myself at a four-year university. If not for Dr. Mahabir's careful and thoughtful organization and planning, I would not have been ready to transfer to a four-year university. And this is why I'm requesting that she be reinstated immediately so she can inspire and encourage more students to pursue their educations and to learn about their societies. Thank you.
Thank you. We have twenty-two speaker cards left, so we're going to try and move this along. There are twenty-two speaker cards left, which would be another hour for public communication. So the next speakers are Billy Reed, Jamila Rowland, Kaylee Shellen, Bob Grill, Ed Wang. If we could move on with these and try and limit this time to maybe an hour, a minute and a half, because we want to make sure we get through all these speaker cards, and that would be another full hour just of the public comment.
Billy Reed wasn't able to make it and I have his statement here. It's quite short. I can do it for him. Right? That's okay, right? Cool.
Can we, we have a speaker card, and can you try and read that quickly so we can get through?
Yes, this is for, on behalf of Billy Reed. Good evening, Chancellor Ortiz and the Peralta Board of Trustees. My name is Billy Reed, and I took the Introduction to Sociology course with Professor Mahabir in the spring semester of 2013. I'm currently a junior at the University of California, Berkeley, after transferring from Laney College. I'm here this evening to speak on behalf of Professor Mahabir because she, along with a few other Laney professors, had a part in preparing me for Berkeley. It was because of Professor Mahabir that I formed an interest in sociology and other social issues that relate to my current major, which is interdisciplinary studies with an emphasis in sociology, public affairs, and childhood development. The course I took with Dr. Mahabir introduced me to studies, ideas, and research methods that will be very useful to my studies. The class was very organized, ran smoothly, and was challenging enough to get me out of my comfort zone and evoke thoughts I never knew I had. Professors like Dr. Mahabir have a tendency to pull the best from you even when you don't care to show it, which is why I request that you reinstate her to finish the work that she started. Today's academic world is filled with professors that come just to collect a check and don't have the interest in their students in mind, which is why, which is why it's disheartening to see professors that do care lose their jobs. Once again, I ask Professor Mahabir to be reinstated because it is in the best interest of the students that need her help. Thank you for the opportunity to share my thoughts and concerns with you this evening. Your time is greatly appreciated.
Thank you. We have Jamila Rowland. Kalia? Kalia? So we could try and make these a minute and a half. We have about another hour if we go for three minutes, so we could try and shorten this a little.
It's short. Good evening, Chancellor Ortiz, Peralta Board of Trustees, Peralta faculty members, fellow students, and all others present here this evening. My name is Kaylee Solon, and I am a student at UC Berkeley, where I am a senior in physics and biology. You might think that people like me do not often come over to community colleges and take classes. The main reason being is that no part of the class counts for credit at UC. The units don't transfer, there's no financial aid available, and the grade means nothing. But there are quite a lot of people like me who do come back to community colleges, and we do so for one critical reason. Community colleges offer what no four-year university or online college can offer, the freedom to take any class for any reason and get a quality instructor teaching the course. I took Professor Mahabir's Sociology class last fall, and as one might be able to tell, sociology has no real, obvious, or direct purpose in classical physics or integrative biology. I took it for personal reasons. I received no financial aid, which was difficult since I commute from Pleasanton, and I received no academic credit. I was thinking that coming from a four-year university, that the quality of teaching would be less than that from UC Berkeley, but I was surprised. I have seen time and time again faculty members here at Laney, all of them part-timers, who rival professors that I have had at Cal. Sometimes while I am in class, I wonder why they are here and not at a four-year institution somewhere. Here at Laney, I have seen some of the best teachers. A few of them are Professor Fossum and Professor Reyes in chemistry, and Professor Mahabir in sociology. Professor Mahabir has been one of my favorite instructors. She not only teaches her subject, she teaches students how to be students. For this, I was grateful, since he kept the class focused and removed distractions. Those hoping to transfer might not realize this, but this kind of teaching will only help them in a four-year university. In upper-division classes at four-year universities, professors don't tell you to turn your phone off or to wake up. You just get an F. Dr. Mahabir does not just teach her subject, she prepares students for the academic goals that they are trying to achieve. This kind of teaching comes only from a professor that loves their job and cares deeply for their students. Please reinstate Dr. Mahabir immediately. I would like to say that it was worth every penny, but I cannot, because it was worth many, many more pennies than what I paid for. Thank you for your time.
So we have Jamila Rowland, Bob Grill, Ed Wang, Jacob Schlegel. If we could try and limit it to a minute and a half so we could get through the public comment.
I'll try. My name is Bob Grill. In my thirty-three years here at Peralta, I've been president of the Academic Senate, president of my campus Academic Senate, president of the union. I am embarrassed, you should be ashamed, because it's your agents that did this. These agents representing you, sending an inappropriate form letter to the best of us, to throw her to the curb, this is not the way to work. The fact is, when you take a union leader, a senate leader, and you do something like this, you're creating an adversarial relationship between you and us, and nobody wants that. Over the years, we've seen that the union and the district has worked together best when we were not in an adversarial relationship, when we had our own responsibilities, but we did it because it worked better for everybody. The senate, the same thing. But when you take an outspoken union leader, send an inappropriate form letter, and throw her to the curb, what can that do except create an inappropriate, an adversarial relationship that's going to cause way more tension? Why do you think there are so many of us here tonight? This is not the way we want things to work. It's not the way you should want things to work. This should not happen. We've got a situation where this is not casual labor. A lot of people like to think of part-timers as casual labor. It doesn't work that way in Peralta. Most of our part-timers have been here for a long time, and when they go through the process to get in the preferred hiring pool, and then to get this form letter, and then to be sent away with no progressive discipline, it'd be different if somebody followed progressive discipline. It'd be different if somebody said, "Here's a problem, and we worked on the problem, we couldn't solve the problem." That's what these processes are for, not to have an anonymous form letter sent, and that's all there is, and nobody knows why. Part-timers are not casual labor in Peralta. They are the core of the teachers in Peralta. In this particular situation, you did it to the best of us, and you should be ashamed.
That's right.
My name's Ed Wong. I'm with the California Federation of Teachers. We are the statewide organization for the Peralta Federation of Teachers. On behalf of our 100,000 members, I'm here to let the Board of Trustees and our members know that PFT is not alone in this struggle. The rights of part-time faculty are a matter of statewide concern for the CFT. Over the past few years, we have led the fight to save city Over the past few years, we have led the fight to save City College of San Francisco and reform our state's broken accreditation process. That fight has been in part about the rights and benefits of part-time faculty. We have taken that fight to the administration, to the governing board, to the ACCJC, to the courts, to the state legislature, and to the U.S. Department of Education. The ACCJC has asked for a fight, and we have given them one. I'm here tonight to state that the wrong and unfair termination of three part-time faculty members is no less important to us than the threat, than the threat of shutting down an entire, an entire district. How a community college chooses to treat its part-time faculty is a statement about its values. We can perpetuate a system where part-time faculty are exploited for their labor, denied the same rights and benefits as tenure-track faculty, and threatened with their jobs for speaking out. Or we can respect part-time faculty as essential members of our community, whose working conditions we all must work to improve, and whose voice must be respected and protected. Thank you.
Jacob Schlegel, Matthew Hubbard, Leslie Fleming, Louis Young, Karen Danich.
I'm Jacob Schlegel. I'm yielding my time to Matthew Hubbard.
Thank you to everyone who is here this evening. My name is Matthew Hubbard. I was born in Oakland, I was raised in Alameda. Both my bachelor's and postgraduate degrees came from what was then Cal State Hayward and is now Cal State East Bay. I have worked at Laney since the summer of 2003. I have worked every term except one, the spring of 2004, after Schwarzenegger slashed the budget and classes that were scheduled had to be cut. I earned my way into the preferred hiring pool, so when I decided to move in 2008, I found an apartment two blocks away from Laney, close to my primary workplace and close to BART, which let me commute to other schools, including Milt, where I teach statistics to the nursing students. Being an adjunct is a hard way to make a living, but being in the preferred hiring pool at Laney has given me a little stability. I have steadily received assignments of six units or more each term, which means I get half of my health care costs paid for by the district. I'm 58 years old, and without, going without health care is no longer an option. Also, I've been able to get hours in the summer, which is vital for part-timers, as we only get paid nine times a year. Losing my summer and fall assignments has been a hardship for me. I am told that I do not fit, though somehow I did fit for 32 sessions before this, 30 in a row. They say this is a reason that I didn't fit. It's meaningless. If this stands, not only is this a difficult burden for Cynthia Mahabir and me to bear, but the vast majority of teachers in the Peralta District will realize the only road to job security is the tenure track, and there are dozens of applicants for every opening. It's a numbers game we can't win. We are educators because we studied for many years to qualify for the work we do. Because of the union, part-timers have a chance to become part of the community, to stay at one school for many years. I see my students and former students all over the neighborhood, not just at campus, but when I shop in supermarkets, or I walk or ride my bike around Lake Merritt. I have enjoyed teaching at Laney, and I hope I will be teaching here again soon. I am still part of the preferred hiring pool, and I expect to be given an assignment in the spring. I asked President Webb to reinstate me and Professor Mahabir. I feel that what happened to Professor Mahabir and me is allowed to stand. No adjunct can feel safe. That is a very bad way to treat the vast majority of the faculty. Thank you for your kind attention.
Leslie Fleming, Louis Young, Karen Danich. Let's try and keep this to a minute and a half so we'll be, be able to get on with the rest of the agenda.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Louis Young. I've been an instructor here at Laney for 29 years, a part-time instructor. What I'm here to say is that I've taught many students here, and I'm in the anthropology department, and a lot of them have gone on to open businesses and to further their education. I was in the preferred hiring pool and had the acceptable, more than acceptable, grade. However, the, my exception was not, not admitted, because instead of having one interview, I had three. Everybody else in the pool had one, but I had to get three. I don't know why. In the part-time rehire pool is the only stability that a part-time teacher has here. Nothing else helps him other than the hiring pool. And if you're not in the hiring pool, you're lost. I must say that the administrative process is flawed, because for one, there's no communication to the faculty. Our union contract is continuously violated. On a personal note, Cynthia Mahabi is our elected part-time representative. She's helped me and others in this, at the, at this institution, and over the years, she's worked and deserved, she has worked very hard and has helped many of us many times with problems that we've had. I hope that her work as a union leader and mine as an activist will not be deterred by this afternoon. So what I'd like to say is that I think that Cynthia should be hired and replacing her past duties. Thank you.
My name is Leslie Fleming. I'm full-time contract faculty at Merritt College, where I'm also the director of the Merritt Anthropology Program. And in that capacity, I oversee part-time instructors, and I'm very familiar with their economic vulnerability and psychological insecurity and professional limitations. As board members, you represent the college district, where nearly 70% of instructors are part-timers who face these difficulties, and most face those difficulties because, as you can see, they love teaching and they, they want student success. Put yourselves in their places. They have to pay rent, they have to take care of children, and they have to take care of elders, many of them. I'd just like to, very briefly, and it just will take a few seconds, read a part-timer's comment that was given in the 2013 survey of 197 part-timers at Peralta. It's representative of many of the comments, and I know you've seen the survey, and so you may be familiar with it. A part-timer wrote, quote, "When I am treated poorly by administrators, I try my damnedest not to let this affect my teaching, but I fear that it might. Is there bitterness in my voice when I talk about the college? Do I subconsciously make assignments less demanding so that I'm not working for little respect and pay?" The part-timer goes on, "We part-timers are on the front lines of fulfilling the college's mission. Think how well the mission could be fulfilled if we were treated with dignity and respect." Teachers at Peralta are the employees with the deepest connection to the community, to the greatest number of people in the community. That would be our students and their families. As 70% of the faculty, part-time instructors represent you, the board members, represent me, and all others who are employed by the Peralta District, the mission of the Peralta colleges cannot be met without fair, equitable, and dignified treatment for these key representatives. Disregarding the intent and the spirit of part-time rehiring sends a message to all faculties, as some people here have stated, and the message is that bias and improper procedure may be applied to any of us. You can help remedy this situation by reinstating these veteran part-timers in the part-time pool. Thank you.
My name is Karen Panich. I've been teaching in the ESL department at Laney for 14 years, and even after so many years at Laney, I know very few instructors outside of my field, but I do know Cynthia Mahabir, and so do all the part-timers. She has been the strongest voice for issues of equity for part-timers in the 14 years I've been at Laney. Cynthia has been instrumental in getting part-timers victories and pay increases, paid office hours, parity checks, and the process whereby those who teach successfully are put into a part-time faculty rehire pool to provide some semblance of job security. She was fighting and working and urging us to get involved and fight for our rights every step of the way. In fact, her voice rose above all the rest. Her failure to be rehired was a complete shock to me, and after hearing her and her students speak tonight, it is 100 times more completely unfathomable how she could suddenly not, quote, "fit into the environment of teaching and learning at Laney College," nor, quote, "best fit the wide range of learning needs reflected in our student body." These reasons are so vague that they give the impression of being arbitrary. This has led me, and I know many part-timers, anxiously wondering what I must do to avoid a similar fate. I have been, I have many years of experience. All my evaluations have been good. I'm in the preferential hiring pool. I feel I'm serving my students and contributing to their success, as I'm sure Cynthia does. These things have led me to feel a small sense of job security. But now I wonder, is there some secret evaluation process linked to the course grades we give? Are our students being tracked to see who graduates, transfers, or stops taking classes? Are these statistics being linked with which teachers taught them? Should I make sure I pass more of my students, give more As regardless of performance? This is the unsettling feeling and lack of trust that is rampant among the part-timers due to the administration's actions. Of course, there is also the added fear that the administration could possibly be engaging in some form of retribution for Cynthia's outspokenness. Lastly, I feel frustrated that scarce college and district resources will be going to lawyers to defend what appears to many of us as illegal action. Please reinstate Cynthia and Matthew immediately and avoid this huge waste of resources. The thousands of dollars that will be spent on lawyers can be spent for so much needed things that are needed, that we all can agree on. Reinstatement will also go a long way toward rebuilding the trust and respect that has been so eroded. Thank you for your attention.
I've got more speaker cards. We've got Alana Kramer, Ed Jarmelo, Sonia Aroneta, Zachariah Doof, Miriam Zamora Cantor, Christine Olson. We'll try and, if we could limit those so that we could keep, keep the agenda moving, that'd be great.
Good evening. My name is Elaine Kramer. I've been in the ESL department since 1997. Laney College is my home-based campus. That means that although I may teach at other colleges too, Laney College is where I can develop and express my creativity and professional expertise together with a community of colleagues. The ESL department has facilitated this for me by providing professional growth outlets and a whole team of colleagues to work with, and the department has worked at unifying the part-time and full-time faculty. This has provided a sense of security and purpose, as well as permission to put my energy here and into my teaching, which I feel has made me the best teacher I could possibly be. Even before the rehire pool, the ESL department already had an unofficial seniority system. So you felt like you belonged. You weren't just going to be tossed out in a minute. And over the past couple of years, in order to better meet our students' educational needs, our department has worked together to bring in a new curriculum. This has been pivotal to really unifying part-timers and full-timers. Indeed, up to now, I had a growing sense of fairness, security, and optimism about my professional involvement at Laney College. Now, however, there are part-timers, we've been talking about, who have worked here as long as me, who, like me, have received positive evaluations, and like me, have contributed their energy, time, and passion to Laney College. Yet they have received a letter simply stating that they are not a good fit. Because I teach academic reading and writing, I have read many essays about the victimization of workers and that, how they had to struggle and live on nothing. Workers were just thrown out on the street. By reading these essays, you learn about human resiliency against all odds, and you are also relieved to know that, after all, this was the past. I didn't expect these horrible things that happened in the past to happen here and now. Before this, I loved my college. I loved my president. And I thought I had some degree of job security. The removal of my colleagues feels like a stab in the back. Their absence on campus right now is keenly felt. Moreover, I know that this could happen to me too. I still do my best as a teacher. My spirit has been dampened. My home-based campus has been shattered by these events, and I can feel the same now. My hope is that these part-timers are reinstated, and I can again feel a sense of pride when I say, "I teach at Laney College." Thank you.
Good evening, Chancellor and the Board of Trustees. My name is Ed Naramio, and I'm a full-time instructor in the automotive department at the College of Alameda. I serve on the senate COA, and also serve as the COA campus co-chair for the PFT. As we've heard the plight of the part-timers, I feel very compelled to speak on this issue. I'm compelled to speak to the board to show my support for my two colleagues, faculty members, and for all part-time faculty who are in the rehire pool and have not been rehired. I feel the dismissal has been an unfair action taken by the administration. Several years back, as a PFT executive board member, I also participated to some degree in the negotiations on the, on this rehire rights. And the negotiating committee at that time felt the administration understood this original intent and what it meant in terms of allowing part-timers some job security rights. Why would the PFT agree to language that will allow seemingly indiscriminate dismissal of part-time faculty in the rehire pool? The Laney administration should honor the intent to the contract, specifically as originally negotiated. Faculty members in the rehire pool should be allowed due process and then given reasons for non-rehire. PFT is demanding the Laney administration commit to using due process and follow proper procedures when taking action against faculty. I'm requesting the Laney administration reinstate part-time faculty who are not rehired and who are in the part-time rehire pool. Student success and education at Peralta are enhanced when talented veteran teachers are supported and retained and are free from arbitrary dismissal from the classroom. Again, I'd like to thank everyone here and the Board of Trustees for listening to my statement. Thank you.
Hello, Peralta community. Thank you for still listening and still being here. My name is Sonia Fernetta. I'm a full-time instructor at Laney College in ESL and English. I'm a PFT representative. I'm a former faculty senate president from Laney and a former chair of the ESL department. I was once a full, I was once a part-timer, both at Laney and at City College. I was a freeway flyer. When I became a full-timer, though, I continued to support part-timers and not separate myself from my colleagues due to the privilege of tenure. At some point, a few years ago, I began to have deep, deeper conversations with Cynthia Mahabir, who was a part-time activist and sociology instructor. She spoke about parity and equality for part-time workers, and I really agreed with her. And I began to work then more on part-time issues as a full-timer. I've always been very proud of Cynthia and her work here at Peralta, promoting equity in the pay scale, and I... in the pay scale, and I, I'm just very, very upset about what has happened. Needless to say, I was shocked when I heard about her, quote-unquote, "firing" after 17 years as a sociology professor at Laney. With no warning, with nothing negative on her record as an instructor, with no discussion about a possible complaint, she was told not to come back. Was there even a parting word of thanks to her for all the energy she put into Laney? No, only rejection, no job. A form letter, as we heard. Last semester, she won one of the two part-time positions on the Laney senate for part-time rep. But she's not a good fit. She's a PhD, an author, a scholar, a great teacher, but she's not a good fit. Several part-timers besides Cynthia were dismissed without proper procedures. This is astonishing. I was a department chair. ESL had about 40 part-timers when I was a part, when I was the chair. It's pretty amazing. In fact, I don't know if you know these numbers, but 75, 700 out of the 1,000 part-timers at Peralta.
Excuse me. And your name is, please?
Christine Olson. So I'll yield what she needs.
So 70, we have 70% of our instructors are part-time. I would never, I would never have reported a faculty member to a dean without even talking to the person. Weren't there some steps skipped here? We are not some fly-by-night institution. Wouldn't this action even affect our accreditation? The part-time rehire pool was fought for, was fought for and has been in place for eight years. We follow procedures here. We respect the rights of faculty to conduct classes and grade in their way in the classroom. And our influence on teaching should be collegial, not administrative. Finally, I want to say that this is an issue of a person's livelihood. Here you are planning to teach a class, and then suddenly you're told not to come back. The standard of living is high in the Bay Area. I think everyone knows this. And this outside-the-contract outlaw behavior on the part of administration makes not only part-timers worried about their job, but full-timers as well. This is our livelihood. I would, I want you to urge that these longtime part-timers be reinstated. We need our job security. We need collegial discussions with them. Teachers, being a teacher takes a lot of energy, care, and love. And we also want that. We want care and energy and love from the administration. We want respect of the part-time pool. We want to follow due process and the contract. And we believe that student success need teachers, needs teachers with peace of mind. Support our teachers.
Good evening, Dr. Ortiz, Member of the Board, Madam President. My name is Dr. Zacharia Doof. I am a part-time faculty teaching here at Laney College. I have been a part-time faculty member since 1987. I have also served as a department chair. In my 27 years at Laney, I have had the pleasure of working with some of the best educators in California. Ms. Cynthia Mahabir is one of them. She has served Laney College for 17 years. In those 17 years, she has proven herself as an excellent teacher, someone who cares about her students and her peers. Cynthia Mahabir has always stood for the right of the part-time she worked with. The administration should commit to due process and follow proper procedure when deciding to discontinue part-time faculty contract. There are many dynamic part-time faculty who have family to support with this hard economic time. The administration should be able to tell us when we are not suitable through an agreed open process. As a part-timer, I'm asking all of y'all to please, please reinstate Ms. Mahabir. Thank you for listening, and thank you for your considerations.
I'm Miriam Zamora Cantor. I'm actually in my 21st year as a full-time faculty at Laney College. I've also been a student at all four campuses. I've worked hourly classified and hourly faculty. One of the models we have for working in a system is collegiality. That we may each have different roles, but we're not above or below each other. We may have different functions, but a common mission, a common goal, to serve and to educate our students. With the idea of collegiality, we are working as a team for the good of all. If something isn't working, isn't functioning, or if there are problems, the first step must be communication. It's common decency. It's also part of due process. Communication, a chance to respond. As you've heard, we have about 70% of the faculty are part-time instructors. We have goals of student success, yet such a huge portion of our workforce is without job security. Does anyone here collect, doubt the collective value to our institution, to our district, of these workers? Then how do you express it? In 2006, both the PFT and the district agreed to the creation of the part-time preferential pool, which outlined some minimal protections which weren't honored in this case. But what I want to speak about, and I'm almost done, is what I see as the right of all of us, all of us who work, whether classified, faculty, administrators, whether full-time or part-time, to the right of the common decency of two-way communication. I ask that the issues brought to you tonight, both legal and ethical, be looked at carefully. And along with my colleagues, I ask that these part-time instructors be reinstated and that all part-time faculty receive the respect that they deserve. Thank you.
Chris Widenbach, Jennifer Shenkosi, Shirley Coaston, Evelyn Lord, and Gloria Schreiber. Do we have the remaining speakers?
Hello, I'm Chris Widenbach from Laney's English Department. I'm here tonight to offer judgment and a vision. In judgment, the vague, summarial dismissal of two colleagues seems an unreasoned, opaque act of aggression in a situation that calls for clear ethical reasoning, transparency, and cooperative dialogue. Instead of saying, "In effect, we're firing you, and we have our reasons which we will keep to ourselves," the administrators involved in this misguided move should be using clear standards, respecting the evaluation process. And if any problems are fairly identified in these instructors' performance, working with them through training or other forms of mediation to arrive at a higher standard of performance and professional development. Every teacher I know shares this view. We know we must continually learn and revise our methods based on our learning. We know that we can learn, that we are constantly learning, and we are open to that learning and development. As for vision, most of the instructors I know are active participants in shared governance and advocacy, mainly as volunteers, like we're seeing tonight. And it levels well beyond the expected committee work and professional development obligations that were contracted and paid for. We do this because we want our college to have integrity in the sense of all components working well and working together. We see functionality and efficiency as matters of mutual respect between administrator, administrators, students, staff, and faculty. We look forward to having working conditions that facilitate such integrity. We look forward to having highly functioning information and financial aid systems so that the first days of classes are not encumbered by registration confusion and frustration. We look forward to our classrooms being clean, comfortable spaces that enable and encourage learning instead of being cluttered, unsafe, dysfunctional, and discouraging. And we look forward to having the adequate level of custodial and maintenance staff who can make that possible. We look forward to working with the number of full-time colleagues that is mandated by our state's education code and to the establishment of equitable compensation for our part-time faculty that squares with the concepts of equal treatment and fair play. In envisioning our college at its best, we have been quite patient in recommending and waiting for improvements. And in the absence of so many obvious needs being adequately and punctually addressed by those with the power and responsibility to do so, we could understandably start asking in our own right, which administrators are or are not the best fit? Instead, instead, we actually stand for those administrators having the right to learn as well. And we hope for more cooperative efforts to bring us all closer to the college we envision. Thank you.
My name is Georgia Schreiber. I am a public health investigator at the Alameda County Public Health Department. And I was a student here seven years ago of Professor Matthew Hubbard, who was a great inspiration to me getting back into school, preparing for graduate school. After some years away, I was scared and out of practice in the classroom, and he was wonderful. He was a great teacher, the best I've had in years and years after. And I was so struck by his creativity and passion and inventiveness at the front of the classroom and cultural sensitivity that coming here tonight to speak on behalf of him and, and returning to him his hours felt very important to me. But as I waited, because I'm almost last, I heard about Professor Mahabir, and I'm not surprised to hear all of her wonderful comments after her own speech. And it's just counterintuitive that these two terrific teachers would be losing their jobs, especially in such a heartless way with this form letter. And when you say that they aren't a fit, that just clearly you don't know who you're writing to, and they are actually the epitome of the, the Peralta community, not misfits. So you have an opportunity to reverse these decisions, and I hope you will, because you have some wonderful teachers here and the potential for great future relationship with them, or not. Thank you.
My name's Jennifer Shenaski. I'm a chemistry instructor at Merritt College, and I'm the PFT grievance officer. We understand that you, the Board of Trustees, respect and honor due process and basic principles of fairness, and we really appreciate all the time you've given us tonight to, to have our say. The official grievance on behalf of Cynthia Mahabir and Matthew Hubbard was sent to Dr. Webb earlier this evening. And we are here asking that Dr. Webb immediately settle this grievance and restore Cynthia and Matthew to the base loads that they are entitled to in the name of due process, the intent of the preferred hiring pool, and fair treatment of all faculty in actions as well as words. Thank you.
If we could continue with the speakers, there's another speaker here that needs to have her opportunity.
My name is Shirley Coaston. And before you, you, the Board of Trustee members and Chancellor Ortiz, you have a letter that was written by Dr. Inger Stark. She could not be here today or tonight, but she wanted her letter read in for public, in the public record. So I'm going to read that letter. Dear Chancellor Ortiz and Peralta Trustees, this letter comes to you to address two current and important issues. The first issue I want to address is about Article 30, point, H.3 of the PFT contract and attached, which is titled, "exceptions to Rehire Preference Policy." This section of the contract carefully outlines when and how department chairs and deans may elect not to offer assignments to part-time instructors who are in the preferred hiring pool. This section of the contract is important because, as an educational institution, we want department chairs and deans to have the right and responsibility to make assignments based on their knowledge of curriculum, academic programs, specific instructors' strengths and weaknesses, and based on student needs. Without this section of the contract, faculty in the preferred hiring pool would have, in effect, the same employment privileges as tenured faculty. And they would have this privilege after only one classroom evaluation done by a colleague of their choice, often performed many years ago. Without Article 30, point, H.3 of the contract, department chairs and deans would be compelled to give assignments to part-time instructors in the part-time hiring pool, even in cases when they know an instructor to be unprofessional or incompetent or unwilling to follow course outlines, or even if they treat students poorly or with bias, even if egregiously so. When the preferred hiring pool was instituted at Peralta, Article 30, point, H.3 was created through negotiations for good reason. To be clear, I am a staunch advocate for part-time faculty. They make up the majority of our teaching staff, and without them, our colleges could not function or function well. I believe part-time faculty deserve strong support, inclusion in all aspects of academic matters, and fair compensation. There is much we, as a district, can and should do to better support our part-time faculty. I pledge to you that, as a department chair and as a member of PFT, I will work hard to improve the climate for part-time faculty here at Peralta. The second point I want to make tonight is more specific. I want to state publicly that I support the recent assignment decisions made at Laney College that resulted in some part-time instructors not being offered classes.
Pardon me, Ms. Coaston, your time has expired. Is there someone willing to cede your time? Okay, we have Ms. Lord.
Okay, now let me find where that is. Those decisions were made by faculty department chairs in collaboration with administrators based on perimeters in the PFT contract. And I want you to note that I am not alone. While few may step up to this podium tonight to defend those decisions, there are many faculty members, members of the PFT, and staff members at Laney who oppose the current PFT campaign to reinstate two particular instructors and instead support the assignment decisions made. Some people have personal know, no, yes, some people have personal knowledge that leads them to support the assignment decisions. Some support the decisions simply because they trust the department chairs and dean, or simply because they trust and support the process. On August 15th, I sent out an email attached to the Laney FAS list serve that offered an alternative perspective to the one presented by the PFT on the issues identified here tonight. In response to that email, I received many responses, more than 50, in support of my comments and... comments and in support of the Laney assignment decision. So this letter is to let you know that I and many of the colleagues at Laney support the recent assignment decisions made at Laney. And we support the existence of Article 30.8.3 of the PFT contract. Our goal should always be to build programs and schedules that first and foremost support our students. Sincerely, Inger Stark, Tenured Instructor in Sociology, Department Chair of Social Sciences, Laney College. And I agreed to read the letter because I agree with what Inger said. I'm a union member. I have served in several positions in the union and the faculty senate. Dr. Webb, I would like to state publicly that the "in-your-face dance" taken during Laney's professional day by a union member did not represent me. Intimidation is alive and well in the district. I am one of the 50 faculty at Laney that responded directly to Dr. Stark's email to Laney. I did not do a Laney FAS response because I did not want to get into an email battle. I support part-timers. Our district could not exist without them. When I was hired as a full-timer in Peralta, my number was around 550. Now we only have around 300. I think we should have more full-time faculty. I support part-timers, but I think that our union, and I know that our department chairs who were involved with this, I respect them tremendously. The dean, I respect. And I guess I'll stop at that. Thank you.
I think that concludes public comment. Thank you so much. I just wanted to say that the board heard the comments from all the speakers this evening, but we cannot take action on items that are not on the agenda. But thank you for the comments. We move on to the next item, Associated Student Government Reports. I'm not sure if we have any representatives. All right. Thank you for still being here.
Good evening. My name is Jose Aguilera, and I am the treasurer for the Associated Students of Berkeley City College. I would like to thank you all for extending the opportunity for me to speak here today. This past month has been a quite busy one, but a successful one at that. ASBCC held its leadership retreat in conjunction with Flex Day at Berkeley City College. We had a collaboration with the transfer community where we held leadership training. We would like to extend a special thanks to JFK University Professional Development Staff for working on us with parliamentary procedure, Robert's Rule of Order, and Brown Act. We also had this very successful Welcome Week. We provided newer returning students with information about school resources such as Phi Theta Kappa Honor Society, EOPS, International Student Office, Global Studies, and as well as ASBCC. That event was made possible by the USE Credit Union. They provided us with music and entertainment. Club Rush was held today as well. We had over 21 clubs join. This gives clubs the opportunity to market and network to students as well as students to get more involved with Campus Live, to participate and become more well-rounded individuals. The last item here is Peralta Student Council Retreat. I would like to thank everyone who participated. I could see some members here on board. Thank you to the advisors. Thank you to the speakers. Thank you to the administration for hosting workshops. Thank you to Board of Trustee President Abel Guillen and President Eleonora Webb for their support. Thank you to Chancellor Ortiz for speaking. Thank you to Associate Vice Chancellor Adella for speaking. Thank you to the student trustees, Raleigh and Oliver, for being there. And thank you to everyone.
Thank you.
Good evening, trustees and Dr. Ortiz. My name is Christopher Stee Stacher, Communications Officer of the Associated Students College of Alameda, and I will be giving a report on behalf of our senate. The Welcome Week of ASCO A held a four-square game with prizes. ASCO A finalized the update plans for the F Building. Currently working on finalizing the cafeteria in the student center. Currently planning Club Rush September 17th with the Constitution Day and Voters Registration Day co-signing together. ASCO A attended the PSC Retreat September 5th and 6th. Today, we have held a faculty and student softball game. Kindly sadly, we lost by four points, but next time we might win. College of Alameda will be hosting the SSCCC Region 3 Meeting September 27, 2014. Currently in the process of charging our clubs for the fiscal year, 2014 to 2015. In the process of reinstating inter-club council, which is known as ICC. Latin Heritage Month kicks off September 6th. It will include a series of events during the month. Last but not least, for this coming month, we plan spoken word event, movie night, and voters' registration. Thank you for listening to my report.
Thank you. Any other student government reports? Seeing none, we'll move on. The next item is Chancellors' Reports. Chancellor, do you have any reports tonight?
Actually, I'd like to pass this evening in view of the time, and I know we have a budget presentation that must be presented tonight.
Thank you. Board of Trustees' Reports. Trustee Withrow? Trustee Oliver? Trustee Gonzalezian?
I'm all good.
Trustee Galasa?
Pass.
Trustee Brown?
Pass.
Trustee Jeremy? Seeing none, we'll move on. District Academic Center Report.
Thank you, Mr. President. And good evening, trustees, chancellor, district administration center staff, college presidents, colleagues, and members of the public. A recent issue of Education Week includes a highly visible article on "The Changing Demographics of America's Schools," simply entitled "U.S. Schools Become Majority-Minority." In support of the core theme of the cover article, the publication also includes spinoff articles about the implications of this nationwide shift on the topics of poverty, teacher-preparedness, funding challenges, and student equity. As it happens, all of these issues and topics are pertinent directly to the state of Peralta colleges today. In the limited time available to me, it is not possible to cover each of these critical and essential topics of inquiry. I'm hopeful to be able to share more information about them at a future time. This historic shift in student enrollment is a wave of change that is quickly moving our community college way, further exacerbating the current situation. Peralta's internal Office of Educational Services research suggests that longstanding inequities and disparities in student achievement and success require immediate, specific, coherent, and global attention. In my last two reports to you on June 10 and 24 of this year, I made an effort to raise your awareness regarding urgent unmet student support needs for such basic human requirements as housing and food, in addition to our students' needs for effective and widely available supplementary instructional resources. In the earlier report, I addressed faculty concerns about the timing and the implementation of PASS, or PASS, the Peralta Accountability for Student Success Initiative that is intended to make use of voter support for a parcel tax to benefit instruction in our colleges. Intended to promote innovative projects that can help fill some of the gaps between what we have and what we need, this competitive proposal process was expected to focus on changing a few things that otherwise create obstacles for student accomplishment. My well-received, at least by faculty colleagues, recommendation supported the development of an integrated and coordinated set of programs and services that incorporate some of the strategies that have already been demonstrated to be effective. To date, since the PASS initiative was announced, we have seen little to no evidence of either shared governance review of whatever proposals have been submitted or academic senate opportunities established in statute and regulation to make recommendations about the content of those proposals. I refer specifically to numbers four, five, and 10 of the 10-plus-one academic and professional matters for which academic senate members have the primary function to make recommendations to administrators and trustees. Number four is educational program development. Number five is standards or policies regarding student preparation and success. Number 10 is processes for institutional planning and budget development. All three of these are integral to the PASS initiative, and faculty senate leaders are staunchly united in our intention to honor and adhere to our responsibility to engage with policy development and implementation matters that pertain to PASS. We await those opportunities at each of the colleges and at the district-level senates. While we continue doing what we have always done that hasn't been working, at the national level, we are reminded from another direction that American business is likely to increase its efforts to reform education. I quote from educator and futurist Brian Alexander, "That's the inescapable conclusion of a new Harvard Business School report, an economy doing half its job." Business leaders are worried that our educational institutions are falling behind other nations in producing skilled graduates, that wages are falling, and their businesses are unable to thrive for long while our communities languish. There is a considerable amount of detail that would be appropriate to share with you at this time, which we do not have time for. But many of the people who would be in the position to have the jobs that businesses need to fill are some of the students whose educational and academic opportunities have been constrained by the inequities and the disparities in our structure. That concludes my report for tonight. Thank you for receiving it. I appreciate your attention.
Thank you, Dr. Van Putten. We move on to the budget workshop. We have a 10-minute presentation on the budget workshop, and then we're going to go into a public hearing. After that, we will take action on that budget. Vice Chancellor Rennie.
Good evening, Board, Chancellor. It is my pleasure tonight to present to you the final budget for adoption for the 1415 fiscal year. Much of this will be a repeat of our tentative budget, just kind of going over, so I'm going to skip through a lot of that in lieu of time. My plan is to go over some of the state budget highlights and then go into some of our funding sources for Peralta Community College District, and then give a summary of the budget allocation model and where we are with that. As many of you will recall, this will be the fourth consecutive year that the governor has actually, and the state has actually, signed a budget on time. This budget contains things that you haven't seen in past budgets. The budget includes a reserve for the state. The governor is basically looking at getting away from the boom and bust cycle that the state has experienced in the past. So he's planning for the future, and he's trying to retire some of the debt that has been incurred by previous budgets. It also includes the possibility for a rainy day fund that I'll go into a little bit, just very briefly. And it pays down some of our deferrals. As you may recall, in past history, the state would defer some of our money that was due to us. Prior to this fiscal year, it was down to $592 million. I say "down" because it was up at 961 at one point. And now it's down to $94 million. And there are provisions to possibly eliminate that depending on the economy for this fiscal year. When we refer to the wall of debt that the governor is looking to pay off, there's $10 million of debt that was incurred in previous administrations. It has a trigger in the budget this year. In past, we've talked about triggers being negative, that if the money did not come in, that the district would be, or the state would be able to have negative triggers to community colleges and K-12 school districts. This year, it's a positive trigger because the budget is very conservative on the revenue side. And saying that if there is more revenue than what has been budgeted, he could use that to further reduce the deferrals that are out there for our district. In November, there will be on the ballot a rainy day fund ballot measure. And basically, it's saying that if the capital gains exceed 8% of what the general fund revenues are projected to be, that those dollars be put into this rainy day fund. At that point, the rainy day fund could be used for the first 15 years, half of it, for the debt. And should any type of disaster emergency occur within the state, those funds could be available for that. One of the biggest effects on us as a community college district is the Cal STIRS. And there is a huge debt out there for Cal STIRS. And what this budget proposes to do is increase the contributions, not only for the state, but also for the community college district and the employees of the district, the certificated employees of the district. This current fiscal year, the rate increased by only 0.63%. But over the next, up until the fiscal year 2021, it's going from 8.25% to up to 19.1%. It does contain many of the factors that were very common to our budget every year. The access or the growth funding is known in prior years of $140 million, which is about a 2.75% growth. Cost of living adjustment of $47.3 million, which equates to about 0.85%, which is half of what we received in fiscal year 1314. There are new dollars out there for the student success program, an additional $100 million. Originally, the $100 million was slated to have a three-to-one match. They did a survey out to community colleges and said, will you be able to, you know, what will it take for you to make that match? All of our colleges did reply to that survey, and through the efforts of all of the community colleges, that match has been brought down to a two-to-one, which is a huge accomplishment. There's an increase for DSPS. We have not received our final allocations for that increase yet. However, they have funded us at 105% of prior year at this point. $70 million in student equity plans, and we just received an email a couple days ago that our student equity, although it's not reflected in this budget, our total for our district is about $1.3 million of that $70 million. So that's money that's not reflected in our budget yet. And then the $50 million in economic and workforce development. We don't have the final figures on that yet. And then, once again, the pay down the mandates, and then the deferred maintenance instructional material, excuse me, instructional equipment. As you may recall, last year, we received about a sixth of those dollars in the budget, and it was split 50% instructional equipment and 50% for scheduled maintenance. This year, they've given local flexibility and said, we are going to give you these dollars, and you locally decide what your needs are, and we have to file a form for that and let them know what that is. In addition, there's a couple of new things. The technical assistant, they actually approved nine additional positions for the state of California, and some technical assistants to support some of their efforts in making standardization in reporting. Career development and college programs, the CDCP credits. Currently, we do not offer any of these at Peralta Community College. It was a decision because of the funding rate being so much lower than the funded credit rate for our resident students. They're slated to increase that rate to equal the credit rate for next year, for '15-'16. So we are looking at planning, putting this into our plans for our enrollment management and things. Once again, the positive trigger, which I spoke about a little bit earlier. And they're also looking at, for next fiscal year, a different funding formula for growth. That funding formula has not been put out yet. However, they said it should be out early, or in September. So a couple of cautions that we need to keep in our back pocket is that our sales tax, the Prop 30 that passed and put the sales tax into place, it terminates in 2016. And the income tax part of that terminates in 2018. We do have that STIRS obligation that we will have to find a way to fund. And deficits, continued exposure to shortfall in property taxes could generate deficits for our fundings. For our district, very quickly, our access or growth funding is about $2.2 million this year. And that is, we're, as you remember in our budget assumptions, we were going to grow at 2.5% as opposed to the 2.75, to be conservative. The cost of living is about half of what it was last year. The 0.85 is about $846,000 for us. And once again, the categorical increases and all of those, the ones that are in the budget are there, and then the one that I just spoke about is not. The $2.3 million for scheduled maintenance, that, once again, last year, we received $225,000 for each for the 450, so that's an increase. The state retirement increases for the The state retirement increases for the employer rates, the STIRS rate went up to 0.63, as I said earlier, and that's about 199,000 for us, and the PERS went up a 0.329%, which is about 74,000, 73,500. Our medical premiums were our big, I gotcha this year, and the medical premiums, as you can see on the rates there, went up. They varied from 0% for Kaiser, which was awesome, but the others went from points, or 17.5% to 26% increases, which cost the district about 980,000 in additional expenses. Our increase to our workers' compensation rate, about 40, 54,000, and then our OPED debt service payment went up about 1.6 million. When we bid, when we developed the budget, we developed the budget with the 300 cushion that we've always developed the budget with in the past. So our targeted resident FTSs is 19,355 with a funded base of 19,055 with a productivity level of 17.5. The unrestricted lottery dollars are budgeted at the same dollar amount as last year, and the state apportionment of 2%, and the parcel tax revenues of 8,530,000 is what we, and that's the amount that we received in the 13-14 fiscal year. So we put all of that together, our total revenues for this fiscal year at this point are 127,207,000 with expenditures to match that. And once again, these are just general fund unrestricted dollars. The equity plans and those are in our restricted funds and not reflected on this slide. You can see that that's about a $5 million increase over last year's revenue stream, and then you can see that our expenditures went up about the same. For those that are graphic, this is how our revenue comes in. Our computational revenue makes up almost 80% of our budget. I put this slide in here because there's a lot of discussion and talk about Prop 30 and how Prop 30 gave an influx of revenue to the district. And I just wanted to point out that the blue here for the Prop 30, those are, that's the Prop 30 dollars. And what the Prop 30 dollars actually did was it, it allowed us not to have to make 15 million worth of reductions in our general fund operating. And so it kept us whole, basically. So it's not new dollars to the districts, it's dollars that would have been taken away had Prop 30 not passed. And so I just wanted this to be out there so that we were all on the same page and understood what the Prop 30, how the Prop 30 dollars fed into our general fund. When we look at our expenditure budget, you can see that our expenditure budget, and the majority, as most community colleges are spent on faculty and staff and the fringe benefits. Our operating budget is only the 13% books and supplies and our debt service and a little bit for capital outlay. Our partial tax dollars are used this year to backfill for our part-time faculty. We have budgeted 6.5 million of our parcel tax dollars for that purpose. We have approximately, I want to, I think it's five positions, classified positions that are paid out of this, out of this fund. So that totals a 7.4 million of the 8 million. The remainder of those dollars were budgeted for, to help fund the PASS, that was, spoke about earlier, projects that have been approved by the cabinet and this chancellor. And then the budget allocation model, as we all know, and we've talked about, the budget allocation model was approved many years ago, August of 2010, and we're in the process of, actually, we're, we're in the process of re-looking at this and determining the funding sources. When you, when you look at the budget allocation model, there's, there's two main areas. One of them is if we funded the, the campuses based, or the colleges based on just a pure revenue allocation model, what would they, what would that allocation be? And then the bottom portion of it is how many, how many dollars that, that budget, that those, each of those campuses and colleges have for their operations. So if you look at this, the revenue allocation by college, that is exactly that. What would the revenue be if we just split the revenue based on the number of FTSs earned and the, over the last three years, the averages of the last three years? And the net allocation is that less and plus, plus the international students and less the costs for district office and central office support. Then if you look down at the total expenditures, those are the expenditure budgets that each of the campuses have as for their faculty and their discretionary and, and their staffing. And if you look at that bottom line expenditures over under net revenue allocations, if we were to have distributed strictly on the revenue basis, that bottom line is the difference. So for example, College of Alameda would receive 530,000 less than they currently have in their expenditure budgets. And I know there'll be questions on that. And that's my presentation. Quick, short and sweet.
Thank you. Trustees, any questions on the presentation this evening?
I have a question.
Trustee Brown.
Would you mind reminding me of how we get the, our portion of the state's student equity plan and the scheduled maintenance payments?
The scheduled maintenance payments were distributed based on FTEs, the number of FTEs. The student equity plan, I was just reading it, I just got it, there's like five different categories there, and so it's based on zip code, it's based on percent of low income, there's, there's five different criteria, and I'm not 100% sure, I just, like I said, I just read it, but I can put that out there and make some...
So that, so that, that means that if our, if our outreach and enrollment to the, the neediest in our population increases, so does the money that comes from the state?
It's my understanding, yes.
Trustees, any other questions? Trustee Withrow.
First of all, I'd like to say that that's an excellent presentation on the budgets. It's, this is one of the best budgets I've seen in the 10 years that I've been on this board. And it's one of the best budgets that I've seen in 40 years of working in this kind of resource allocation, if you will, process. I very much appreciate the fact that you talk about the environmental set of where our money comes from and the various permutations to it, rather than just a bottom-line shotgun. I appreciate the fact that you talk about going into the future. I mean, the, the, the cost of the increase in CalPERS and spread out over time, what that's actually going to mean over time in terms of raw dollars, so that we have a, rather than a snapshot now, we're looking at, here's where we're at, and here's some of the things that we're going to get trussed up on if we don't have some changes. And the CalPERS, you mentioned the CalPERS thing, they probably will be coming in with something very similar to what CalSTIRS is coming up with, so you could almost double that in terms of dollars, and then look at it and the potential impact that that's going to entail in future years in terms of fewer faculty and fewer class sections. You talk about the fiscal cliff, which needs to be talked about on a regular basis because I think just an awful lot of us would like to tune that out, but it's there, and I know that you're taking action to smooth it, but instead of being a cliff necessarily, it's going to be a slope, but it's going to be a pretty steep slope. And I like the way you tie it into the strategic goals of the institution so that it makes it apparent that it's, here's why we're allocating the funds the way that it's been done. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Trustee Withrow.
Thank you, Trustee Withrow. Trustee Gonzalez, you in?
Thank you very much for the budget presentation. I suspect you're pretty fatigued.
Yes.
Just getting ready for, for the budget, and I appreciate your, your work. I'm noticing the STIRS piece, 198,000 this year, which is kind of nothing in our budget, but the, what's looking forward is pretty big. Has your office yet done the analysis just for the, the dollar impact of what that's going to mean for the district? What's the, how much money are we talking about getting to, if you combine the faculty and the district contribution into one number, what's that dollar amount roughly, plus or minus, you know, 500,000?
I haven't, I haven't looked at the, the faculty portion of it.
Okay.
But for the districts, it's, it's approximately 14 million.
14 million? Okay, so it's a big chunk of change that we're talking about. Just to put that in perspective, how much does all our counseling on all of our campuses cost? If we'd like just fired all the camp counselors, would we, would we, would we have covered that, that nut?
Is that a motion?
No, no, I'm just trying to put it into perspective. You know, if we, if we eliminated all the, you know, language arts, could we, could we cover? It's like the scale of the dollar amount is so big, and I think we need to start putting it in that scale. 14 million is just like, it's a little too abstract. And I think, in fact, what we need to do is really combine the faculty and the, and the district side, or the, the personnel and the district side of the PERS and STIRS, figure out what that number is, because frankly, if we don't get organized politically, we're going to get clobbered here, and I think the reason this budget came down was that, in fact, they, you know, they made the calculation that they could do it with no political consequences.
Well, it's kind of like eliminating a college, Nikki.
Exactly.
14 million is like eliminating...
Exactly, that's why I was...
Take your pick, one of the smaller colleges.
All right, we could just take off one of our colleges, I suppose, is, is the scale that we're talking about. And I don't, I don't know that, well, see, the, anyway, I don't want to go there. I, I think the, the scale isn't, isn't in the, in the imagination of, of the, the district yet. We're being conservative on the FTS target. Did we make the full target last year?
Yes.
So, and the year before?
Yes.
So we're being conservative. If we brought in that extra 300 FT, FTS, what would that mean for the district?
Well, the, the extra 300 is a cushion, you mean as far as if it was funded?
Yeah.
Because remember, the state-funded growth is only 2.75%, not, not the full 300, which does not equate to the 300, but the 300...
I see.
...times the fourth, if you would multiply that by 4,646 a piece. So that's, yeah, about 1.2 million.
All right. And then the last thing, you know this question's always coming from me?
Yes, and I'm ready.
It's this budget allocation question, and so we pulled in an additional 5 million this year above last year?
Yes.
Something like that. And the way I thought this works was that we would ignore any past imbalances of, of revenue. We wouldn't take money away from campuses even if the budget allocation models, you know, said they wouldn't, really shouldn't get the money, but that any new money coming in would then be used to rectify the problem. So as I look at your figures here, Laney's down about 1.6 million, and BCC is down 800,000, but we're pulling in 5 million additional dollars of revenue. Can you explain why we are not just saying, here, let's be done with this problem of imbalances? We'll take 2.4 of the 5 million additional revenue, we'll put those where it should go, and then we'll take the extra 2.5 million, and we can divvy that up any way we want. Why aren't we doing that?
Well, because the, well, there's, there's, there's multiple reasons, but one, one reason is that the expenses, when the new revenue comes in, we have to fund step and column, and we, those are campus, I mean, at all campuses.
Okay.
We have the debt service increase, which is a general fund contribution, and it's not a campus. We have the increased enrollment, or the increased costs of the health and welfare, which is across all campuses, and so...
Okay.
...you can't really say what we're going to fund the health and welfare increases at one campus, but not at the others.
Okay, well, so to do...
And so we have to do that right across the...
After you take all of those figures out, then, you say, okay, we've got these mandatory health increases, step and column increases, what's the, what was the revenue then that was left over after those mandatory expenditures?
I'm not sure off the top of my head, but, I mean, step and...
Ballpark?
I would say, I don't know. I really don't know. I don't want to guess and, and put a number out there that's not accurate. But I will tell you this, that we have sat down and we have started an enrollment management committee, and we have been meeting, the presidents, myself and Dr. Orkin, and we are all looking towards equalizing the funding source.
Well, that's what the budget allocation model was looking for.
Right, but the budget, there's, there are things in the budget allocation model that we need to modify, and that's what we're looking at because of the fact that really the only way that we can equalize is through attrition and through, what was the other thing? Attrition and, oh, growth dollars.
Right.
And our growth dollars, because we apply growth to all campuses, we don't just apply it to one or two campuses, those growth dollars, it's not logical to say you can grow, but we're not going to give you funds to grow.
Well, it's not logical to pay, not pay campuses for the FTEs, that, the FTS that they've got, and so it's irrational one way or another, it's just whose ox is getting gored.
Right, and that's why we, we're going to look at the budget allocation model and the way it's written, and we're going to resolve that issue.
So did we make any progress this year towards this budget allocation model and actually implementing the policy that, that we have on our books, that we've had on our books for many years? Did we make any progress this year?
No.
That's what I thought. And at the point where this administration can come back and actually give a rationale for that, that makes sense, that says, here's why we are not following our policy, and this is why it's good for the district, and this is why it's good for our students, then I'll stop asking these questions, but in the meanwhile, I will ask this every budget cycle.
Right, I understand that, and, and I, we do plan to have an answer for you. It's just with the way that we budget in, in this district, because it's only attrition. If a faculty member is, I mean, we're, we're looking at a budget that 85% to 90% of our budget is people, and unless we're willing to move people...
Right. Well, so was it the case that, that the College of Alameda and that Merritt College had no retirements last year?
That, I'm, I believe there were a couple of them at each campus.
So that would be what we would call attrition?
Mm-hmm. And that's part of our enrollment management, meaning that we're discussing where those positions should go and...
Now, I understand if you have a retirement, you know, and it's a critical position, maybe you can't just close the, the department down or something, it's more complicated than that.
Yes, and that's...
But this goes on for too many years, and, and you've heard this song from me too many times, and I'm getting bored with myself, so I'm going to just shut up.
Thank you. Trustee Oliver.
Yeah, I kind of had the same question, but I, I tried to find the information from last year, the allocation. I thought Laney was underfunded about 1.4 million last year, so has it increased or, you know?
Yes, it, it increased because there was a one-time allocation of parcel tax dollars last year that helped to offset some of the, some of the inequities that were, that are, that are being referred to as inequities. So there was a one-time allocation for both BCC and Laney that were not allocated this year at this point.
Any other questions from trustees? Seeing none, we're going to move into...
Just briefly, to thank for your presentation, I just wanted to, and we can go offline and talk about this, but when you talk about the parking fees funded and details, you know, I, I had opportunity this summer to, to visit several campuses, mainly in Southern California, and they really have real efficient parking systems that they're earning revenue, where they're allowing, you know, to support their security around campus. So, you know, I can take it up later, but I think it's something we really need to look, look at is getting some decent machinery to take away the people so that they could go help the patrons and the ambassadors, to can help folks, you know, monitor the facility versus just hawking folks on the money. But we don't have any machinery set up, so I can talk to you later, but this can...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No, just thank you for the presentation.
Seeing none, thank you for the presentation. We're going to move on now to the public hearing. I'm going to gavel in the public hearing, the Resolution 14-15-16, the 2015 final budget. The public hearing is now in session. Do we have any speakers on the public, on the budget to be adopted by the board? Seeing none, we're going to go ahead and close the public hearing.
So move.
Seeing no objection, the public hearing is closed, and we now move to the adoption of item number 16, which is moved to proceed or to go after the public hearing and the actual item. Item number 14-15, resolution number 14-15-16 is the budget for 2015, and I have a... And I have a motion from Trustee Galos.
Second.
Here a second from Trustee Withrow. Any other discussion on the budget?
Call a question.
Seeing no discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Great, motion passes. And it's now 10 o'clock. I'd like to ask my colleagues to extend the meeting for another 15 minutes?
10 minutes.
10 minutes? There's a motion to extend the meeting for another 10 minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Trustee Riley, seconded by Trustee Brown. Seeing no objection, we'll extend the meeting for another 10 minutes. We move on now to, without, the next item is information technology presentation. And without objection from the board, I'd like to ask that we move that item to the next board meeting on the 23rd. Seeing no objection, so ordered. We'll move on to the consent calendar now. The consent calendar are regular items that are non-controversial to be voted on by the board. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved. I'll second it.
Not all at once, guys.
I second it.
Out of here.
All right. Moved by Trustee Riley, seconded by Trustee Handy. All those in favor of adopting the consent calendar as presented?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone object? Seeing none. The consent calendar is adopted. Now we move on to the last item, which is action calendars. I don't think we have any action calendar items on the agenda. So that brings us to announcements. Trustee Brown, do we have announcements?
Regular board meeting will be held on September 23rd here in the district offices boardroom. The board welcomes back all of our students, faculty and staff after the summer and wishes everyone a successful school year. The board recognizes Thursday's observance of the somber events of September 11th. Mr. President, that concludes the announcements for this evening.
Welcome back to Peralta Colleges. Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. Appreciate the public comments and have a good night. This meeting is now adjourned.